Call of order, the highest from City Council meeting, February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. With us this evening for our invocation is Father Morris from Saint Lawrence, Saint Mary's, Saint Joe's, Saint Anne's, I can't remember.
Yes.
Anything saint in Lawrence County. And after the invocation, we will follow up the pledge allegiance everyone would remain sacred.
Father.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the blessing of this land, this country, and our ability to govern. We model it after you, for you are the true source of all life. Help us and help this county, help this city to grow ever more in your love and mercy, and keep us safe as we do your will. We ask for this in the name of your son, for he is Lord forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
I.
Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brown, Clary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Perry.
Mr. Brown and Mr. Perry both had issues with flights this evening, not arriving back in time. So next is the approval of minutes for our joint meeting of the upper township trustees and city council on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The finance committee meeting minutes of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and the regular council meeting minutes of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Any errors, additions, changes to those minutes? I have a couple. Under communication for regular council meeting minutes of the twenty-third, about halfway down where it says the most restrictive, it should say the least restrictive. Last sentence on page one of the communications, it says requirement in sales ratio, it should say food alcohol sales ratio. And then lastly, under motion passed unanimously, Mr. Brown voted no. Any other errors, additions, additions to those meeting minutes? Those will stand as approved. Next is our audience participation. If you'd like to address the energy city council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, you have five minutes to do so.
No, no, I'm not here on the phone.
John Baker the second, ten twenty-four South Sixth Street, Irons in Ohio. There was a petition for an alley to be closed, given to Jacob Park, I spoke to Nate Klein. The survey that has been proposed by the city council needed in order to close the alley before a vote can be taken on it, am I correct, Nate?
Yes, everything has to come with the mayor.
The mayor.
Then we would vote on it, yes.
The survey cost is between thirty-five hundred and four thousand. We were wondering if we could get a preliminary yes or no, or a heads up whether if we do do a survey for thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars, if it would be closed or not.
So I can't take, we can't have an official straw vote, but people can, I think, voice their, that they have a concern.
Correct.
Correct, you cannot straw vote.
Yeah, certainly straw vote, but we have kind of opportunities to voice any concerns of vacating that, that alley.
Ten twenty-four what?
It is between eleven fourteen and eleven oh eight, South Sixth Street, Irons. So people take the fair home, between the fair home and the adjacent property that's in.
South Sixth.
Cross.
Yeah.
And you guys have property across the alley too?
Yes, we have on both sides of the alley. And as far as my knowledge, there is no public utilities in it, except for abandoned gas only, probably gas.
That would, just, I'm just speaking for myself. That would be the only issue for, typically it comes before the public utilities commission to say whether there's utilities or there's an easement needed, et cetera. So as long as there's no public utilities.
That would be the only, okay.
Actually, we maintain a permanent easement, apparently, with any vacation now, but the issue is if you run a build, then we would have to make sure that.
We don't plan on building anything, or maybe a team of that sidewalk, do over the gardens, the gardens, the minor.
Not a structure.
Yeah, no structure what we built, yeah. No structure what we built upon existing alley, just done.
I, I talked to John, he was concerned about forking up the money for a survey, have they not? So I just said, asked him to come here and see if anybody had any issues. All right, I'm on the voice, but I already said that I have no issues with voting, but it's also there's no utilities or any issue with that. So that's, that's my understanding, so.
Mr. Haney.
Over the past, it seems like a year and a half, we've vacated, it seems like a lot of alleys. I, I don't have any problems with it, although I think it, for one, keeps traffic from going side houses with kids and everything like that, just having one alley makes it a little bit safer, in my opinion. We've done it for other alleys, maybe increase property value, whatever, but unless there are issues with utilities, you know, I, I'm typically on board. And actually, I've actually been the one to file a couple petitions for that for residents, so I assume I will be probably good with that.
Mr. Clary.
Yeah, I'd be good with it, too. Being involved in lots of those alleys being vacated, there are usually nothing except people live right there, so.
Jacob. I, I have no issues with it.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Not having done this before, you all having been done this before, we had to come and ask questions, and I appreciate it, thank you all.
Thanks, Mr. Haney. Thanks, John, what do you do?
Mary in Tussie, fifteen oh seven Karen Street. I'm back again about my pitched driveway. I've actually taken some pictures so that you all could see where the water's laying on the sidewalks, on property, not, there's nine of us that have pitched driveways, and the water just covers the sidewalks, our driveways, our property. You notice the street is dry, there's not a drop in the street because they've pushed it back onto us. And I'm making you aware again, I'm going to continue to do this until we get it fixed. I was noting that the catch bases are usually four houses, and then you have a catch base. There's, I think the best I counted was seven houses. There's no catch base on either side of that street, where nine of us have these pitched driveways, that's causing water to come back on us. And I hope that, you know, I was looking at the Pizzin degree, and the city council signed it, I'm hoping the job will follow up with this and not just let it go. I know it might not be your, anything that you can do about it, but maybe you can question. Also, a lady wanted me to bring up about the driveways, extra driveways that are horrible. The, there's cracked curbs. And something else I'd like to bring up is the new trash truck can't get around the circle. He had to literally back up into someone's driveway and try to maneuver around because they have taken up space with these curbs where people can't park halfway in their yards now. We have one gentleman who has a therapist, he has a, his grandson has that therapist, a round cloth nurse, there's two extra cars that have to park in front of that house and take up the space of the, of the street. I watched the UPS guy today park past my house, he had to walk clear down to where the cul-de-sac is, to drop the package off, because he could not get UPS around that curb. I don't really know why they made that, that section so big. I mean, I know it used to be wide, but now that they've taken parts of our curb, where we had rolling curbs before, you could go up in your side, we can't do that now. So you have to park literally on the street. And then you hope that these, when you're pulling in there, the curbs are so high that you're not scraping the side of your car, because you can't tell how close you are to the curb. Where before, you know, you could go up in your yard, it's rolling, you know, it was a rolling curb, and that wasn't a problem. So this has really created a problem with these big old curbs. It's something you really need to look at, because there's going to be people and, well, another example is, I had a gentleman come to get a riding lawnmower. He had to park down the street and drive my riding lawnmower halfway down the street back to my house because he could not make, too many cars were there, and even if there wasn't, I don't know if he could have made it or not, he couldn't go around the cul-de-sac. So it's going to be an issue. And I sat right there and I've got on video where trash, trash truck could not go around. He had to continually move, maneuver to pick up the trash around the cul-de-sac. So that's another issue that probably needs to look at. And I will mention that at sixteen oh five, the sidewalk there between those two houses, sixteen oh five, and I think it's sixteen, it's either seven or three, there's a little piece of side, I came down, I came down tonight, everything was dry except for a piece of that sidewalk, right there, between those two houses. I don't know if it's a leak, I don't know if it's some kind of drainage coming through, but it's wet. And somebody probably needs to be looking into that. I don't see anybody, not that I look for anymore, but I don't see anybody from Arcanus down there. I don't, you know, I don't see anybody checking up on anything. And one last thing I'd like to mention, Columbia is horrible. I don't know if you've been down there lately, they did not asphalt it, but I would like to know when the next asphalt's going to come. Do you have any idea when that'll be?
They usually open in the spring, in April.
So what, you're going to have one month, so this has to be totally done by, by April twenty-eighth? One at the date that they. May twenty-eighth, okay. And so just some concerns I wanted to bring up, did anybody have any, I mean, I hope you'll come down and look, this was a couple weeks ago, and this was after the rain.
Will you leave those in there so you can pass them along to Arcanus?
I'm sure Kevin's seen it before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chris.
All he has to do is go down and take a picture, he can send it to me.
Are people still parking on both sides of the street?
Yeah, why wouldn't they?
Well, because I think what one, one solution is going to be probably close one side of the street off.
Well, I'll tell you now, I don't want everybody parking everywhere in front of my house, and that's what's going to happen, because I have a double driveway, so I have an open area in front of mine for when I have a visitor or my daughter comes. People, you've got three cars in one driveway. So where's all those people going to park all inside? I don't think you'd have enough room for the cars that are down there, to be honest.
Well, that's, that's kind of the problem, since that area was developed, there was typically one car per family. Maybe you were locked, you had a car back then, you know?
Yeah.
So instead, you know, you have families with, you know, at least two cars most of the time, if not, if they've got kids, or great kids, two, three, maybe four. So I, but I've been talking to a couple residents down there, and there's, there is going to have to be a solution of, either one side's going to have to be parked, parking in one side, no parking, or something like that.
You're going to run into people who might be on disabled, if somebody's parking in front of their house, and maybe they have another car, I mean, I'm thinking of the gentleman that has the scooter, he usually does park in his driveway, but let's say it's blocked or something, and he has to, you know, he's going, he's going to try to clear down the street with that scooter, he already has trouble getting in his driveway with it.
He wouldn't obviously block anybody's driveway, but.
But you have a lot of elderly, you have a lot of people that are.
Well, you could put handicap reserved parking spots there.
Remember you said that.
I mean, you can't, I mean, that's what, and I'm just, you know, I was just talking to the residents about some solutions, and I, I think that's, because I've been driving down there, and if people would kind of use more common sense, they wouldn't park like this, they would kind of stagger, but there's bigger trucks.
That's what we.
That, they're not staggering, they're trying to park right beside each other, or make it, instead of just backing up five feet, they park to where it makes more than possible.
It really isn't bad on my end, other than the cul-de-sac, because you, like I said, you have one couple, their, their driveway is not good, and it's, they park one car out front. Then you have another lady that has the same thing, she has, she has nurse command, therapist, where, where's those two people going to park? Then you have another one that has a therapist, and, you know.
I get it, I get it.
The people next door to me have one, two, four cars. I mean, you know, they start parking in front of my car, I'm going to clear down the street, you know, of course I'm not, because like I said, I have a double driveway, but.
Most, most, I wouldn't say most, I'm not going to sell, most of them have a garage or a driveway down there, for the most part. But one, the thing that works on me is the pitch on the driveway, why, what, have you put like a level on it, or?
You can't, you can't tell.
I can tell, I just want to know how high level it is, and why, you know, that should have been the inspector that.
I have thought, I did have a man look at it, but I did not get the number off of how pitched it was, but we did do the test where, you know, we poured water, and we definitely seen it running back, back on me, so.
I'll try to, try to act.
And there's nine of us, and then you can see the six inch drain that put in there, it's not working because they left some pipes up, but those are going to clog up the first time you, you cut the grass. One other thing I'll mention too, is the EPA told me that those water troughs down there are supposed to be cleaned out monthly, the city told them they clean them monthly. They haven't been cleaned since last summer. There's stuff in them, there's water in them, I don't know what the, what you're going to do with those, but those need to be cleaned out.
I'll, I'll try to get some answers on the.
Too long, Karen.
Pitch driveways there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Moving on, communications, there are none. Reports, there are none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give first reading to ordinance twenty-five oh eight.
Authorizing the fine district, you're too late, you're doing a three-year contract, but should Hark and Associates, and declaring emergency first reading.
I'll mention that that received favorable recommendation from finance this evening. If the clerk could please give first reading to ordinance twenty-five oh nine.
Reducing the stormwater rate and declaring emergency first reading.
Give mention that that received favorable recommendation from the public utilities committee tonight. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five ten first reading.
Increasing the water rate for the city of Irons in Ohio and declaring emergency first reading.
Also, that received favorable recommendation from the public utilities committee tonight. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five eleven first reading by title only.
Increasing the sewer rate for the city of Irons in Ohio and declaring emergency first reading.
And that received favorable recommendation from public utilities this evening. If the clerk could please give second reading to ordinance twenty-five oh five by title only.
Adopting the temporary budget for the city of Irons and State of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and declaring emergency second reading.
Clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five oh six second reading by title only.
Vacating Dayton Lane and declaring emergency second reading.
Moving on to resolutions, if the clerk could please give discussion.
I just wanted to mention that in public, on record, Mr. Klein put together a proposal to reduce rates to even out anything, make it a net zero. So I appreciate your, appreciate your hard work on that. You know, there's two increases, but they're at net zero. Just wanted to put that on record. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, I did it in public utilities, but I forgot now. Thank you for that, and John, and John for working on this collective stormwater, wastewater, and water rate issue for all of our various needs throughout the city and our compliance with the EPA, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, Chris. Moving on to resolutions, if the clerk could please give resolution twenty-five twelve reading by title only.
Twenty twenty-five salary resolution, establishing salaries for non-union employees and declaring emergency.
Bob.
We'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty-five twelve.
David.
I'll second that, and mention that it received favorable recommendation from finance.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Gary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Vaughn.
Resolution twenty-five twelve passes. Moving on to miscellaneous, Mr. Haney, Mr. Clary. Are you able to meet Monday at five P M?
Yeah, hopefully, why not?
We have, we have the amended, or the temporary budget that's been held in suspense for, how many days, John?
All of them.
Damn it, and since there are, make sure you get that part of all of them. And since there are only five, we cannot adopt that this evening, so I would ask that, I asked Mr. Hawk and Mr. Klein before, but Mr. Brown can be here for sure, Mr. Perry cannot, but if, I would like to see us get that passed as quickly as possible with six of us meeting. Is, is the building open on Monday?
I'll open it.
Oh, will I have to be at that meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a special, it's a special meeting for purposes only of second and possible third readings of ordinance twenty-five oh eight, twenty-five oh nine, twenty-five ten, twenty-five eleven, third reading and possible adoption of twenty-five oh five, twenty-five oh six.
I want to speak for Sergeant Roberts.
Yeah, well, if the building, well, does that matter? Yeah. True. Do you handle that?
Yeah, a little bit.
Five o'clock, that is Monday, I think that's the seventeenth, isn't it? Yes. Monday the seventeenth, again, council chambers, council chambers for this specific purpose of second reading of ordinance twenty-five oh eight, twenty-five oh nine, twenty-five ten, third reading of ordinance twenty-five oh five to twenty-five oh six, with possible adoption of legislation. Good? Any other miscellaneous, Chris? Don't they?
Do we have any?
Handout.
Oh.
March eighteenth through the twenty-second, June seventeenth through the twenty-first, and October fourteenth through the eighteen. He, he left yours off.
Hey, I've got a garage full right now.
Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it.
And I know, I know I've asked you in conjunction with this, we also, as part of this holistic cleanup with the city, we had done away with our, no, we made changes to our rummage sale permits, do you remember that, Bob? And we had decided to do one biannually for the city on a, on a select date. Would you mind, we, we had originally wanted to do that prior to the dump dates, so like, it was March eighteenth, a Tuesday, I'm assuming, because you usually do Tuesday through Saturday. So the weekend before on March, whatever that would be, the fourteenth through the sixteenth, having citywide rummage sale.
Fridays, the fourteenth, fifteenth, Saturday, sixteenth, seventeenth.
We, we had discussed this when we moved to this, Sam, it was in a previous administration, so, I mean, I don't expect you to know that, but.
I think we did it last year.
Yeah.
For one of them, yeah.
So, so before these come along, I'd just like, a recommendation from you on which dates to pick, and like, let's do this biannually, or whatever. I think the legislation was biannually to do it, so that people could, people could have, have an opportunity to have a rummage sale, and then the next week dispose of things that they didn't need or want, so.
Rather do during the two, well, in October's not as favorable, but you have an oath in March.
Yeah, true.
And if you wanted to make a judgment in June and October, when it's, it might have better weather.
We'll go base off your recommendation.
I'm just like another weatherman.
Nate?
I'd make a motion to set, pardon this, the sever twenty, twenty-four finances.
Haney. Sorry. Roll call, please.
Clary.
Aye.
Danny.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Nate?
One more. Mayor, I've had, just from residents, that has, has some concerns, they, they've seen some realtors around town showing properties, they think the people that may not, may not fit the zoning use in that neighborhood, and possibly the number of people living in that neighborhood. Is there any way that we could possibly ask Mark, Nick, just to send something out to realtors, maybe an updated zoning map and updated, or zoning code, just to make sure that they understand, when, when they go to market some of these, some empty homes, what permission would be used, and what the zones are, just so that they have an idea, so they're, you know, I'm trying to say, that's something you might be able to send about a dozen of those out, local realtors or something, that'd be.
Can you get that list of people, realtors?
Realtor, I can get you one, I'll get you a list.
Yeah, it's asking you on realtors or this.
Yeah. I, just to make sure that they, maybe they, maybe they're not aware. So, just so that they're, yeah. I'll get you a list, yeah.
Mr. Haney has some strong opinions on that, I don't like that.
Thank you. I'll get you a list if you don't care, the, just the nine on the.
Bob.
Duke, T, Jer.
Haney.
Hawk.
Both of them? Roll call, please.
Clary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
No.
Hawk.
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we're German.